Good evening and welcome to the regular meeting of the Madera City Council. The council meetings are open to the public. This meeting will also be available for public viewing and participation through Zoom. Members of the public may also observe the live stream meeting on the city's website at Members of the public may comment on agenda items at the meeting or remotely through an electronic meeting via phone by dialing 669-900-6833, enter ID 86327196200 hashtag. Comments will also be accepted via email at citycouncilpubliccomment@madera.gov or by regular mail at 205 West 4th Street, Madera, California, 93637. It is now 6:01. I hereby call this meeting to order. Alicia, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Garcia?
Here.
Mayor Protem Gallegos?
Here.
Councilmember Rodriguez is absent. Councilmember Montez is absent. Councilmember Evans?
We are.
Sure. Councilmember Mejia?
Here.
And Councilmember Villegas?
Here.
Thank you, Alicia. Would you please all rise for the invocation led tonight by Assistant Pastor Rick Beckett of the Good News Ministry?
That's him. Lord, to God, I'm here tonight representing Good News Ministries and Pastor Eddie Gallegos. He's asked me to come down and pray for y'all. And that's exactly what we're going to do right now. Father God, we just thank you, Lord, for this opportunity, Father God, that you've given us that we can come down and pray for the city council, Father God, and our first responders, Father God. Lord, I just ask today, Father God, the first thing I want to ask today, Father God, is that your presence fill this room tonight in Jesus' name. And Father, I just thank you for that, Lord. And Father, we just want to lift up Jim Talbot's family today, Father God. He passed away this morning. He's a longtime resident of Madera. He worked for Madera City, Madera County. Father, we just want to lift him up today, lift up his family today, Father God, that, Lord, that you'll give them peace and comfort, Father God, in these hard times, Lord. We just ask, Father God, that you just meet every need that they have today in Jesus' name. And Father, we just ask you that by the Holy Spirit to heal the pain, Father God, to heal the hurts, Lord, that the family is going through tonight, Lord. And we just thank you, that, Father God, you'll continue to bless them, Father, and you'll continue to provide every need that they have, Lord. And so, Father, we just thank you for that today. Now, Lord, we lift up our city council here today, Father God. And, Lord, we just ask, Father God, that you give them direction, Father God. Show them the path, Lord, that they need to take to make decisions and do the right things, Father God. And, Father God, we also ask too, during this time, Father God, that, Lord, all of their families, Father, everyone who are represented here today, Father, that's in the city council and our ones, Father God, that are on our first responders, Lord, or police, Father, or fire department, Lord, I just ask, Father God, that you just keep them all healthy. You keep them all safe, Father God, and you provide everything that they have need of, Father. And, Lord, and I just ask again also, Father, if there's any among them that are sick, Lord, in the city council or the first responders or even in their families, Lord, I just ask today, Lord, that you heal their bodies in Jesus' name. And so, Father God, we just thank you for this city, Lord. We love our city of Madera. We thank you, Father God, for the ones that you provided to take care of this city, Lord, and operate this city and make the decisions that need to be made. But, Father God, I ask that the hand of God be on this council meeting tonight, Father God. And that, Lord, when these folks come to work, Father God, I just ask that the presence of God will still be here and they'll still enjoy the presence, Lord, that you've left here. So, Father, I thank you for this opportunity again today, Father. And I just ask, Father, a blessing on this, on this meeting tonight. And I just thank you, Father God, for everything that you've done in this city and everything that you're going to be doing in this city, Father. So, Lord, we just give you the glory and the honor and the praise and worship today, Father, in Jesus mighty name.
Jesus.
Amen?
Amen.
Thank you, Lord.
Could you remain standing for a moment? We're going to take a moment of privilege to recognize Jim Talbert. Jim Talbert was a mentor to many of my fellow council members here, my colleagues. He served the city of Madera and the county of Madera for over 37 years, and he served this community well. So, just a brief moment of silence. Thank you very much. We will now have the Pledge of Allegiance led by Councilwoman Elsa Mejia.
Ready, salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the American Constitution of America and to the republic for which it stands, with the highest standing of God and the Constitution of America.
Thank you guys very much. God bless you guys.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Appreciate it. We will now move on to the approval of the agenda. I ask my colleagues, are any additions or corrections to the agenda?
So, move the approval of the agenda.
Second.
Motion to approve the agenda by Councilwoman Evans, second by Councilmember Villegas. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you much. We will now move on to public comment. The first 15 minutes of the meeting are reserved for members of the public to address the council on items which are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council. Speakers shall be limited to three minutes. Speakers will be asked but are not required to identify themselves and state the subject of their comments. If the subject is an item on the agenda, the mayor has the option of asking the speaker to hold a comment until that item is called. Comments on items listed as a public hearing on the agenda should be held until that hearing portion is opened. The council is prohibited by law from taking any action on matters discussed that are not on the agenda, and no adverse conclusion should be drawn if the council does not respond to public comment at this time. Are there any members of the public wishing to speak on items on something other than that something is on the agenda?
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem and city council members. My name is Minerva Mendoza, and I am a resident of District 2. I also work for the American Front Service Committee Pan Valley Institute. And our work is focused on strengthening the leadership capacity and fostering the civic engagement of immigrants and in California's diverse Central Valley. I am here today to invite you to join us for a vigil honoring the lives of immigrant farmworkers who passed away on February 23rd. This vigil is going to take place next Thursday, March 28th, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. at the Madera Courthouse Park. Some of the family members of the farmworkers will be joining us. We hope that we can count with your presence. Thank you.
Do you have a flyer by any chance? If you do have any information written for me, if you could give it to our city clerk? Thank you. Are there any other further public comments? Okay. Do we have any written or Zoom comments, Alicia?
We have none, Mayor.
Thank you very much. We'll close public comment, and we will not move on to a proclamation. So, if Lori Wilson and your assistant can come up to the... Who do you? The Red Cross, yeah. And who's your friend?
This is, Katrina is our disaster program manager from Madera Mariposa, and Dante as well, you know?
All right. Well, welcome.
He is our mascot. He's our everything.
I'll make this short so you can make the introductions. This is from the Office of the Mayor, this is a proclamation in honor of American Red Cross Month, whereas during the American Red Cross Month in March, we celebrate the humanitarian spirit of the city of Madera and reaffirm our commitment to help ensure no one faces a crisis alone. Whereas caring for one another is at the heart of our community, whose simple acts of kindness through the Red Cross provide help and hope in people's most difficult moments. And whereas their support, volunteerism, generous donations are critical to our community's resilience. We hereby recognize this month of March in honor of all those who have held the American Red Cross founder Clara Barton's noble words. You must never think of anything except the need and how to meet it. Now, therefore, be it resolved that I Santos Garcia, Mayor of the city of Madera, on behalf of the entire city council, do hereby proclaim March 2024 as American Red Cross Month.
Hi, everybody. I just want to say thank you. I've been, I'm lucky enough to be able to be the face that represents, and I brought, of course, Katrina, the disaster program manager for Mariposa-Madera. She is the one that is responsible for making sure we are ready for when things like floods, fires, snowstorms, all those wonderful things hit, and even when they hit all at once, to make sure that we're ready to respond and take care of this community, working with our volunteers. So, it's people like Katrina and the countless volunteers that put in hours and hours of their time to make sure that we're taking care of our communities. So, thank you, Katrina, and thank you for recognizing the work that our staff and our volunteers are doing, because they really do do it with a compassionate heart and a heart of service. So, thank you for that. I appreciate it. And of course Dante, who brings comfort and care to everybody he meets. Can we get a picture with you guys?
Can you get up here? I'm not sure how we're going to do Dante. If you come up here too.
Yes, come on. Thank you, Emily.
Somehow.
I want him to come this way more.
And then we can get Dante in here. No, turn.
Okay, ready? One, two, three. Got it. Got it.
Both cameras?
Dante, I like that name.
Got it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry, we just, thank you so much.
So much. Thank you.
Next up, we will have a special presentation from the city of Madera for the Women of the Year. And so, I'd like to introduce Mayor Protem Cici Gallegos.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to this wonderful evening here with all these beautiful faces here in the audience. We celebrate Women's History Month and to dedicate the women and to reflect on all the goodwill they've done in this community. The city of Madera is thrilled to host, this is our third year of Women of the Year Awards, and we'll be recognizing incredible women who exhibited their work, their courage and passion to better this community. These women live, work, and volunteer their time in Madera. Rosa Parks quote is, "One person can change the world," and these women have done just that today. Before I begin, I'm going to give you the honorees in the past, so you can see the women that you will be sitting next to on the list. Candy Tally, District 1; Christina Rocha; Charlotte Brewer; Debbie Bray; Annette Quoc; and Kathy Nishimoto, District 2; Maddie Mendez; District 3; Mona Davy; District 4; Lucy Salzar; District 5; Lennar Hippito; District 6; Matilda Biafón; and the mayor, Alicia Brown. So, we can give a round of applause to those past recipients. Now, I started this three years ago, and I've kept my tradition by having to not always tell the truth and say just a little white lie on getting my recipient here. So, I'm going to introduce her and tell you all about her while she stands right next to me. My recipient this year for Women of the Year, District 1, is Ginger Latimer.
Thank you. Let me read all about it.
Ginger has been involved with theater and arts in Madera Unified for over 30 years. My children have been involved with theater with her. She attended Fresno State and the American Academy of Dramatic Arts, from acting in Western films to producing and directing over 100 plays at Madera High and Madera South. She's always been and continues to advocate for the arts. She has always had a passion for bringing theater and the arts in the valley and continues to do so at this time. Ginger prides herself on helping others and being a guiding light for her students, many of whom have gone to work for Madera Unified in various positions. Ginger and her students have won various state championships, including at the Chapman University Shakespeare Tournament in Los Angeles, and the Lean Festival, and many others. A lot of the students call her Miss Latimer, and we're very proud of the many students who have received theater scholarships and have gone on to the professional acting careers. Ginger has been an advocate for these young people in Madera. They would call her their hero, because she has shifted a lot of their lives in the right directions where they didn't know which way to turn. And with that, Ginger, I would say that you're a hero to a lot of our students, and I commend you for all your work in this community. She is still now working with Madera County Arts, putting on summer productions as of The Odd Couple, Aladdin, The Little Mermaid, and many others. So, if you have time, you need to come see one of these. And I'm a teacher, if you don't know that, and you understand that. We do a lot of extra. People are like, well, you get paid for it. I can tell you right now, Ginger Latimer does so much that she does not get paid for, that she does enrichment to help this community, to help our students, such as her husband, Mr. Latimer, who's retired now, who does all the painting and the playsets, all volunteer to make this community better for the young people in the city. So, with that, Ginger Latimer, District 1, Woman of the Year, thank you so much. I'd like to call up past recipient Maddie Mendez is going to help me with this next one. Councilman Montez is under the weather, not feeling well, and thought he could make it on Zoom. I went to see him this afternoon. I go, no Zoom, no Zoom. You don't look good. So, I'm going to present his Woman of the Year, and this is our past District 2 recipient, Maddie Mendez. Again, this was another little white lie on this recipient who doesn't know why she was coming also. And that is going to be Tilly Moreno is Morales is going to be District 2, Woman of the Year. Come on up, Tilly. Now, she has served this community in education for over 45 years. Don't add up the age here. Tilly started as a teacher's aide at Thomas Jefferson Middle School. In addition to Thomas Jefferson Middle School, she served at Washington and Madera High School. Tilly was an instructional, was an instructional, sorry, excuse me, instructor mental in setting up the childcare center at South Campus. Tilly retired from education in 2019, but continues to serve her community in volunteering. Tilly is currently a Transit Advisory Board member for the city of Madera for District 2, and has advocated for improving across the city in various aspects of multiple functions. She is a very involved community member and likes to walk with her good friend, Maria Luna, to make sure things are going well in the neighborhoods and in the city, because if they're not, she's the one on the phone letting us know, especially Councilman Montez. Tilly does not sit by idly by when things need to happen. She gets involved, she gives her time, and advocates for change. Tilly serves her neighborhood and her city well, and we have a better community because members like Tilly that do so much to make the city better for all of us. Congratulations, Woman of the Year, District 2, Tilly Morales. Now, I'd like to introduce District 4 to come on up. I need Councilwoman Evans.
Blessings and good afternoon, everyone. I am so very honored to stand here today and to introduce my Woman of the Year, Anna Garone. Please come.
As she comes. Anna has two students at James Monroe Elementary. She has one at Desmond. Anna is a mother, but she's not only a mother to her babies, she's a mother to... Get up here. She's a mother to so very many. I had contacted Mr. Perez, which he is in the audience, her principal, and I asked, I said, "I need a special woman, because James Monroe is my school." And in a matter of seconds, he contacted me and he said, "Anna, she is the student store, is that what you guys call it, the candy store? She, she does the after-school. She, if you want it done, all you have to do is call Anna. She is there for everyone, for all the children, and they're not only the children of the school, those are her babies as well. She has a young man that is so very, very special. And your mom told me about you and how great you are. So, I would love for everyone to give a round of applause for Miss, for Miss Anna, Miss Specialty. Thank you. And this says, City of Madera, Woman of the Year 2024, presented by Councilmember Evans for Miss Anna. Thank you for your dedicated, excuse me, dedicated commitment and to our community. And I thank you for being who you are. We sat for, I don't know how long, and just talked and talked, and it was just a special bond that she and I have, because I'm at James Monroe. Mr. Perez, the principal, is awesome, and he chose an awesome woman for my Woman of the Year, Miss Anna.
You got it? Yeah. Thank you.
At this time, I'd like to bring in Councilwoman Mejia, District 5.
Thank you, Councilmember Gallegos. Good evening, everyone. Buenas tardes. I'm going to start off in Spanish in honor of my recipient's native tongue. Voy a empezar en español en honor a la lengua materna de la mujer del año para el distrito cinco. Es seleccionado a Jessica Flores de Jesús como ganadora de la mujer del año del distrito cinco. Jessica, me puedes acompañar, por favor? Y también tenemos esto para ti. No le quería poner mis huellas, pero aquí está para que lo abras tú. Jessica Flores de Jesús es residente de Madera, ha sido residente de Madera toda la vida y también residente del distrito cinco toda su vida. Asistió a la escuela primaria Millview, a la escuela secundaria Martin Luther King Jr., y se graduó de la escuela preparatoria Madera South en el 2016. Luego, obtuvo una licenciatura en ciencias del comportamiento forense de Fresno State, de donde se graduó en el año 2020. Yo he tenido el privilegio de presenciar el crecimiento de Jessica como persona, como profesional, y como defensora de nuestra comunidad a lo largo de los años. Realmente creo que Jessica representa una generación joven de personas en Madera que ya no permanecerán en silencio y se están movilizando activamente para lograr cambios en nuestras comunidades. Ver esto es inspirador para muchos de nosotros y también es un llamado a la acción. A través de su trabajo como becaria de derechos de los inmigrantes para Siren, que significa Red de Servicios Derechos de los Inmigrantes y Educación, Jessica ayuda a educar y empoderar a los inmigrantes de bajos ingresos en Fresno, Madera, y más allá. Pero Jessica no parece realmente marcar su hora de salida a las 5, ya que a menudo comparte información con nuestra comunidad sobre cómo mantenerse activo y también sobre los recursos que pueden obtener. Y ella no solo habla, sino que también hace. Ya sea tocando puertas, haciendo llamadas telefónicas, asistiendo a protestas por causas en las que cree, o simplemente ayudando en iniciativas beneficiosas para nuestra comunidad, ella no es alguien que se abstenga a participar. Es por eso que estamos aquí para reconocerte hoy, Jessica, como nuestra mujer del año del distrito cinco, y agradecerte por el trabajo que haces todos los días. Gracias.
And I will now read in English. I have selected Jessica Flores de Jesús as District 5's Woman of the Year. Jessica Flores de Jesús is a lifelong Madera resident and also a lifelong District 5 resident. She attended Millview Elementary School, Martin Luther King Jr. Middle School, and in 2016, she graduated from Madera South High School. She went on to earn a Bachelor of Science degree in forensic behavioral science from Fresno State, where she graduated in 2020. I have had, I have had the privilege of witnessing Jessica's growth as a person, as a professional, and as an advocate for our community throughout the years. I truly believe that Jessica represents a young generation of people in Madera who are no longer staying quiet and are actively mobilizing for change in our communities. Seeing that is inspiring for many of us, and it's also a
Seeing that is inspiring for many of us, and it's also a call to action. Through her work as an Immigrant Rights Fellow for Siren, which stands for Services, Immigrant Rights, and Education Network, Jessica helps educate and empower low-income immigrants in Fresno, Madera, and beyond. But Jessica doesn't really seem to clock out at five o'clock, as she often shares information with our community about how to get active and resources available to them. And she just doesn't talk the talk, but she also walks the walk. Be it door knocking, phone banking, attending protests for causes she believes in, or just lending a hand in initiatives beneficial to our community, she's not one to shy away from being hands-on. That is why we are here to recognize you today, Jessica, our District Five Woman of the Year, and thank you for the work that you do every day.
At this time, I call District Six Councilmember Venegas, please.
Monica, can you please come over here, please? Good evening, everybody. Thank you for coming. Monica Castillo, this is the Lady of the Year I choose. I'm gonna back a little bit to history. I meet the Castillo family in nineteen eighty-four, working in the field on the north side of Madera County, picking olives. At that time, I meet the mother, the father, one of the oldest son, one of the oldest sister that present right here. And later on in the future, two of his brothers were working in the brick store. One in the meat department, one as a catcher. And the other one, Israel, was working with me in the chicken place when I was the manager for San Inishimoro. And I'm very proud to this family. Now I'm gonna go to Monica. Monica Castillo, live here in Madera and District Six. Monica is naturally born in the city of Madera. The same for Mexican immigrants and farm workers and agriculture. Monica graduated from Fresno State University in rehabilitation and health science. Monica is now working in Fresno City College in general health science. She also teaches in St. Joachim School on Saturdays. She's a very busy lady, so. Monica Castillo had a passion to teach and lead, with leadership to volunteer. Monica Castillo remembered how she worked with agriculture fields and the grapevines picking grace to make raisins, pruning, tying grapes vines in the winter, trying to make a living with the parents. Monica Castillo led more young people to continue higher education for the much better living salary. Monica, thank you for everything you do. And we also have a plate that we're gonna read it to. I'll close it. The City of Madera, Woman of the Year 2024, presented by Councilmember Villegas to Monica Castillo. Thank you. Thank you for everything you do.
Next, we have Mayor Garcia.
After we finish our presentation, if the recipients who are here tonight could come up and join us, we're gonna take a group picture with all of you and here with the city council. And then we're gonna take a break so that you can all share and take pictures for a limited period of time. My recipient is not here today. She has a family situation. She apologizes for not being here. Olga Garcia has been a friend of the Garcia family for many years. She's been a teacher at Madera Unified for over thirty-eight years, and she is the vice chair of the Madera Democratic Club. Besides all that, she's, she's done a lot of wonderful works. But in the interest of time, we do have a lot of business to cover tonight. We're gonna go over our budget for the following year. So at this time, we're gonna go ahead and have Councilwoman Gaiego close it out.
Thank you, Mayor Garcia. I'd like to thank everybody that came out tonight to support these recipients and honorees. It is our pleasure to celebrate them with our love, support, with all the laughter that will happen after this, and the happiness of knowing that you've made a difference in the city of Madera, in this community. So with that, thank you all again, and you are Woman of the Year 2024. Come on up.
Let's just do this one picture.
Let's see, I'm taller than most, so we'll get back. Hey, ready? Ready? One, two, three. One more. One, two, three.
Guys, stop it. Me? We will now take a ten-minute recess and reconvene at six forty-five. We'll now reopen our regular meeting, and we have an announcement. Shannon, would you please make the announcement, please?
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor. Yes, Councilmember Mejia has asked to be excused under the Just Cause Extension. She just learned that there is a family issue that has come up, and she needs to go help care for her sister very promptly. She would like to try to remotely appear, which she is authorized to do under AB two four four nine, as long as we have a quorum here. So as long as we have, wait a second, one, two, three, four, four people, we're still good. As long as we have four people here, we can keep on conducting the meeting and moving forward and allow her to appear remotely. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Shannon. We will now move on to, we have no introductions today. We will move on to Item A workshop. Item A one is a budget workshop for the current fiscal year status update report by Mr. Lima. Good evening, Council. Mike Lima, Director of Financial Services.
Mike Lima, Director of Financial Services. Tonight, we are going to give you the, tonight I'm going to give you the first, well, there will probably be several budget updates over the next few months. And I'm sure you're sitting there thinking, didn't we just do budget? Didn't that just happen? Yes, you did. You did it in August, but we are rapidly coming up to the end of the fiscal year and we need to get a new budget for the upcoming fiscal year in place. And so, so we are already in the budget process. Our city staff is, and we thought this would be a good time to brief you on kind of where things are. Because when you build a budget, you got to know where you're at in order to have an idea where you want the budget to land as you're building it. So with that, staff has started preparing, as I mentioned, the 2425 budget for council consideration. Our fiscal year, as you all know, is July 1st to June 30th. This presentation will focus on the current fiscal year's revenues and expenses. Specifically, how is the city doing compared to budget? Presentation will conclude with a look at measure K revenues and expenses. And then some general comments about factors that will influence the 2425 fiscal year budget. Just want to make one other note that staff is right now finalizing the 2022-23 audit and our ACVER. We will be bringing that ACVER to council at your next meeting on April 3rd. So we are just about done with it. So let's talk about the general fund and then general fund revenues. You might remember when I was up here about a year ago, I mentioned that we have the big five revenues here in Madera. For those of you who don't know, those are sales tax, property tax in lieu of vehicle license fee, property tax by itself, permit revenues and interest. Combined, these five objects make up 65% of our total general fund revenues. How these five go is how the general fund goes. So let's talk about the big one, sales tax. We had projected, our budget was built assuming 13.1 million of sales tax. Right now, given everything that we have seen so far, we are projecting we will finish the year at 12.2 million. That's $900,000 under budget. It is also under last year's actual total of 12.5 million. So about a 1.8% decrease from last year's actuals. Why is this decrease happening? Well, we are just seeing a very slowdown in sales and this is across California that we are seeing this. We have oddly enough, and this sounds counterintuitive, but we are dealing with falling gas prices. Gas prices have fallen from a year ago. We actually make more sales tax revenue as gas prices are higher. As gas prices fell and stabilized, we ended up, we have earned less revenue from sales tax. Also, there seemed to be, as people came out of COVID, out of the pandemic, they did a lot of big ticket purchases. Cars, other maybe appliances, things like that. They're not doing those kind of purchases right now. We're not seeing that come through. Here are the, here are the sales tax comparison for the last six months and compared it to the same time period in fiscal year 2223. So this is by month for the first six months of the year. I should mention, sales tax revenues, we, it's a two-month lag for us to get it. So the December is the most recent one. We should be getting January any day now, but it's a two-month lag from the state. So that's why I only have December numbers here. But as you could see, it was pretty flat all the way through November and then December's sales tax came in 120,000 below last year's. When you're, and December is the holiday season, when people are buying a lot of gifts. When your holiday season is bad, you're not going to have a good fiscal year. It just happens that way. So now, mind you, even you take out December, we were flat. We had zero, almost, it's, the numbers are almost identical between the two fiscal years. That also is not good because it's not growing, but our costs are growing. So when sales tax is flat, we've got an issue. The good news is, so that's the bad news. The good news is, we have had very strong revenues on the property tax side. Both property tax by itself, which I'll talk about in a second, and property tax in lieu of vehicle license fee. First one I'm going to talk about is property tax in lieu of vehicle license fee. We had projected in the budget, or we had built into the budget, assuming 7.6 million of revenue. We are on track to get 8.3 million, so about $700,000 more. And that's quite a substantial gain from last year's actuals of 7.4 million, about 11.8% higher. This is, for those of you who don't know, this is additional property tax that's provided by the state to local governments to offset the loss of vehicle license fees that were taken by the state back in 2004. Property tax in lieu of VLF grows as assessed valuations grow. So much like as property tax grows as the values go, so does property tax in lieu of VLF. Property tax by itself is also seeing strong growth. We had built into the budget 4.8 million. I'm projecting we're going to finish the year at 5.2 and also up about 300,000 from last year's actual of 4.9. So as you can see, the property tax is offsetting the loss in the sales tax, but we're flat. And that's a problem when you're flat. Permit fees, our permit fees are actually, we budgeted a million. I'm projecting that we're going to come in at a million two, but that's actually down from last year. We had a million five. So we're starting to see a slowdown in construction. It's still higher than what we had thought it would be, but it is starting to slow down. We're starting to get that coming. And that bodes, that's a little bit of a trouble sign going forward because you're not seeing that property tax growth come through. And finally, our fifth member of our big five is interest income. We had built the budget assuming a million. We are right now at 900,000 as of last week. I'm projecting we're going to hit a million. And that's much higher than the 600,000 that we earned last year for the whole year. Why is that up? Well, in May of 2023, the interest rate that we were earning was 0.75%. Again, not 7.5, 0.75, less than 1% is what we were earning on our money. At the end of February, we were earning 3.16%. So we're earning about four times more interest revenue than we were just 10 months ago. And that's because of higher interest rates. With the Fed announcing today that they're going to keep interest rates high, we anticipate that our interest earnings are going to continue to remain strong. So I know all of you paid close attention to my presentations and you're probably like, Mike, you changed one of the five. There was hotel tax was on there last year, is number five. And you're right, you are absolutely right. Hotel tax was one of the five, but it fell out. It's now number six. And, and the reason why, we are actually noticing a softening in our sales tax, or I'm sorry, our transit, our hotel tax. We collect 9% on, whenever someone stays in a hotel room, they get a 9% charge onto their room tax or the fee that they pay. We're projecting it's going to be about 100,000 under the 2324 adopted budget figure of a million and 200,000 under the actuals of 1.1 million. So we assumed a slowdown, it's slowing down even more than that. Anecdotally, we don't really know why. Obviously, people are not staying in hotel rooms. We don't know why. We did anecdotally hear that in 202223, there were a number of forest fires and the state had rented out a number of hotel rooms in the area to house firefighters while they were recuperating from working and then they'd go back up in the mountains. That did not happen this past year. We did not have the forest fires. So that's possibly one, but we don't really have a handle on it. We just know it is slowing down. The other revenue, this was not part of the top five, but it's kind of an interesting thing just to show how changes in society have an impact on us. Our cable franchise fees are down and only by about $40,000, not a huge amount, but it's still down and it's showing a trend of going down. And we noticed, we believe that this is evidence that cord cutting is becoming more and more prevalent, that people are just not, not utilizing cable for their TV. They're streaming it now. So we're starting to see it in the numbers in this revenue stream. So this is the big picture, the big five. When you shake them all out, the big five are up about 900,000 compared to last year and we're up about 500,000 over budget. Again, mainly on the back of the interest earnings. That's where we're really seeing it. All other general fund revenues are down slightly. So at the end of the day, last year, we collected 40.6 million. I'm projecting we're going to get 41.2, which is about 1.3% growth. Now, we had budgeted 42.9 million. So you're looking at it and going, wow, we're 1.7 million under budget. But I want to remind council that we had built into the budget 1.5 million of carryover use. It's being used to give to other departments in order to pay for salary increases and the health benefits that were awarded through the last set of MOUs. When you take that out, we're really 41.4 million amended and 41.2 actual. We're only about 200,000 under are what we thought we would get. That's where we're really at. So what does this mean? Well, while revenues are projected to be up 600,000 over FY23 actuals, there could be a million under, a million seven under adopted. And when we take, as I mentioned, when we take that fund balance out, then we do not have as significant an issue. Let's look at expenses, the expense side of things. Expenses are actually relatively flat as well. I mean, we're, we're seeing, we're seeing a positive sign on that side. Our personnel services costs are up about only 1.5% and that's because we have a number of vacancies. And as a result, we're not incurring the salary expenses that we otherwise would. And so that has actually remained relatively flat this year. We are seeing a significant increase in maintenance and operation costs. Pretty much everything is more expensive and that's what we're starting to see in the numbers. Our interfund charges are relatively flat, capital expenses are up, and then our debt and transfers are also up a bit. So at the end of the day, we had budgeted 42.9 million. I'm projecting we're going to come in at 40.4. That's 2.5 million under budget for this year. And I think I just said all that, except I should mention that the savings under amended budgets, personnel savings, that's 1.3 million. And then operations and maintenance savings as well. Even with the increase in operations and maintenance costs over last year, we're still under budget in that category. So while general fund revenues are projected to be 200,000 under adopted amounts, general fund expenses are 2.6 million under budget. In other words, the expense savings is more than offsetting the revenue shortfall. Based on a current activity, I don't believe we're going to need to spend that million and a half, take it out of the piggy bank. We're going to have enough salary, expense savings that we're going to be able to cover all those additional costs without tapping the piggy bank this year. I want to touch on measure K because measure K is such an integral part of our public safety funding. Revenues, we, last year, we collected 7.1 million and that's not just sales tax, that's interest, that's every other thing that goes in there. $7.1 million, we budgeted 7.5, I've got us coming in at 7 million. Measure K sales taxes projected to be 1.6% under last year's actuals. You might remember from my earlier slide, city sales tax is 1.8 million. This one's coming in a little stronger and there's a reason for that with the collections. But in the interest of time, I won't go into it. But at the end of the day, this one is getting a little stronger. But again, interest is helping us. We're earning, we've almost covered that entire shortfall with interest earnings that we have in this particular fund. On the expense side, we had, last year, we spent 4.1 million. We have a budget of 7.1 million and I'm projecting we're going to come in at 6.6. So that means our budget, we're going to spend, we're going to be under by about 500,000 on the expense side. So about half a million under on the revenue and half a million under on the expense. So it nets out almost exactly where we would want it. So based on, as I mentioned, I want to reiterate, we're about 200,000 on the general fund under our amended budget, but we are about 2.6 million under amended budget on the expense side. At this time, it does not appear that we're going to be talking about budget cuts. I know there are other cities that are already starting to bang that drum. I don't see that happening here. However, we are also, as we're building this budget, we are looking at that our revenue growth is probably going to be almost nothing. We're going to have a very flat revenue. And so the city manager's direction and what we're currently working on right now is basically a status quo budget. No additional new projects or new services that we're going to be providing. It's just what we have right now and that's what we're going to be going within the upcoming year. So that concludes my presentation and I'm available to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you very much, Michael. This is a workshop, but I will ask if there's any members of the public who would like to ask questions or make some comments. Seeing none, we also, do we have any public comments on Zoom or written?
We have none, Mayor, thank you.
Okay, I'll bring it back to my colleagues for any questions or comments. Seeing none, you did an excellent presentation and.
A hand up.
I have one, I have a question. I'm on Zoom now, but I did want to know what interfund charges are and an example of them.
Elsa, do you mind holding on for a minute? For this Zoom, do they have to have a camera on? Does a vote or anything?
They do not have to have a camera on. However, we now need to take roll call votes.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so yes, go ahead, Elsa. We'll just take a roll call vote from now on if we're going to do a vote. Thank you, go ahead. Yes.
Are we doing the roll call right now?
No, 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 if we need a vote, we will have to do a roll call.
Okay, yeah, my question was, what are interfund charges?
Yes, so what those are, are charges from one fund to another one, literally. For example, the fleet fund will bill the general fund for maintenance on police vehicles. That is passed through as an interfund charge. So there are, again, there are charges that are from one department to another.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Seeing no further comments, thank you very much for that presentation. We'll see you again, right?
Not tonight, but you will see me again, yes. Yeah, there will be sequels.
Yeah, we're a long ways from being finished on that. Thank you very much, Michael. Well, we will now move on to the consent calendar. Matters listed under the consent calendar are considered routine and be, and will be enacted by one motion and one vote. There will be no separate discussion of these items. If discussion is desired, a member of the public or a member of the council may request an item be removed from the consent calendar and it will be considered separately. Are there any members of the public wishing to speak on the consent calendar? Do we have any written or Zoom comments on the consent calendar, Alicia?
We have none, Mayor.
Thank you very much. We'll close public comments on the consent calendar and I'll bring it back to council for discussion and/or a motion.
So move to.
So sorry, just for item B5, I just wanted to note that I am not advising on item B5, but I am available in my individual capacity. Thank you.
Thank you, Shannon. Councilwoman Gallegos, there was a motion to approve, a second by councilmember Villegas. Is that correct? Okay, motion to approve the consent calendar. All those in favor say aye. Oh, we actually, roll call vote, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, I forgot that part. All right, well, Alicia, could you please call the roll?
Mayor Protem Gallegos?
Yes.
Councilmember Rodriguez is absent, councilmember Montez is absent, councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Councilmember Mejia?
Yes.
Councilmember Villegas?
Yes.
Mayor Garcia?
Yes.
Motion passes with five yes votes and with councilmember Rodriguez and Montez absent.
Thank you very much. Congratulations, thank you very much. We will now move on to, thank you, thank you. We will now move on to item C, public hearings. Item C1 is a rezoned property located on 119 South I Street, REZ 2023-03. Mr. Tackett, do you have this item?
Mayor Assistant Planner Adalina Rueda has this item.
Already?
Thank you, let me go ahead and just bring it up here.
No, Mr. Mayor, if you don't mind, I stand corrected. I just looked it up for this particular one. It must be both audio and visual for the councilwoman to participate.
Okay, so if you.
Thank you so much.
You can advise the councilwoman.
Yes, councilwoman Mejia, if you turn on your video so that you can participate. If you're unable to do so, won't be able to participate at that time. Thank you.
I will need to hop back on when I could turn it on, I'm driving.
Thank you, we'll record you as stepping out. Please let the, please let us know when you come back on with your video and we'll record you coming back in.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, good evening. Assistant Planner Adalina Rueda reading for item C1.
And before you're.
Excuse me, Emmy, and before you're, you're sharing both screens, would you mind just sharing your, your primary screen?
Am I now, sorry? All right, so, so I have like three screens out here. What exactly, you guys can see both my.
We see the, the mountains.
Okay, all right, sorry about that. Give me a second.
No problem, no problem.
Move this over. Through the mayor, just so you know, we no longer have a quorum, so if we could pause.
Absolutely, yeah.
Assistant Planner would be very happy about that.
Yeah, yeah, we can take a minute. So we'll, we'll, we'll pause till we get a quorum back.
And Annalee can get that up and running.
So we have a quorum again? Okay, sorry, it's all right. It's been that kind of a night.
Addie, we're ready for you.
Thank you, sorry, sorry about that. Assistant Planner Adalini Rueda will be presenting item C1, rezon application for 2023-03.
Addie, we're not seeing the, your screen that you want to show us.
I went to help.
What do you guys?
Oh, yay.
All right, one time charm, everybody, thank you. I got three screens here, okay. So let me redo this, I think I said my name already a couple times. So C1 rezon, 2023-03 for 119 South I Street. It's an application to rezon a 0.23 acre parcel from the residential zone of R3, which is one unit per 1,000 square feet to the commercial zone of C1 by commercial. Rezon 2023-03 was filed to facilitate approval of site planner view 2023-18, which proposes to construct a 3,870 square foot professional office building that will offer four suites, a courtyard, and parking. The interior vacant lot is located between the streets of West Yosemite and West Sixth Street on the northeast side. It is, like I mentioned, is currently vacant and is being proposed to develop a professional office space. The reason of the application is really taking what we have right now. So for example, we have a, the parcel has a commercial land use designation, but it has a conflicting zone of R3, which is residential. Our goal for the rezon is to basically create consistency by rezoning it to a commercial zone. In this case, we'll be rezoning it to light commercial as we think it's, it best fits the neighborhood. The general plan for the project site is commercial and will be staying commercial. The only thing that we are planning on wanting to change is the actual zone, the zone district. Right now, we have a R3 zone, as you can see on the left. And then on the right, we are proposing to turn it into light commercial. Rezon 2023-03 did get presented to the planning commission on February 13, 2024, in which our commissioners did consider the proposal and recommend approval to the city council. It should be noted that no community member spoke in opposition to the rezon proposal. However, there were a few comments or concerns regarding the actual site plan 2023-18 in which staff was directed by our commissioners to work with the applicant to meet basically a plan that will satisfy the neighbors or the surrounding neighbors' concerns. The project has been determined to be categorically exempt under the California Environmental Quality Act Guidelines, Section 15303, Class 3, and Section 15332, Clash 32. Staff is recommending to waive a full reading and introduce an ordinance adopting determinations of categorical exemptions pursuant to sequel guidelines, Section 15303, and Section 15332, and amending the official zoning map from R3 residential, one unit per 1,000 square feet, zone district to the like, to the light commercial C1 zone district. This item will be brought before the city council again for a second reading on April 3, 2024, and we are asking for legal counsel to read the motion to approve this item.
Thank you so much. We just have one minor tweak. There are two ways that the council is inclined to approve this motion. One is to do a motion to waive the full reading, and by title only, adopt an ordinance to the city council, the city of Madera, amending the official city of Madera zoning map to rezon approximately 0.23 acres of property located at 119 South I Street, APN 010131002, from the R3 residential, one unit for each 1,800 square feet of site area, zone district to the C1 light commercial zone district. Or the other option is to say what the city attorney said as a motion. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. So we will now open the public hearing regarding this matter. Are there any members of the public wishing to speak on this matter, item C1?
We, I'm sorry, I was jumping the gun.
What was that?
Go ahead.
Are there any written public comments or?
There are none, Mayor.
All right. I know, I now close the public comment on this item. I will ask for discussion and/or emotion from my colleagues. Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Mayor Garcia. Addie, can you just give us just a quick rundown on what the concerns were with the planning commission on this site plan?
It was in regards to the site plan for the actual construction of the professional office space. A lot of the concerns were parking, if there were, if there was going to be enough parking for the professional office space. There is, according to, based off our ordinance, we, based off the site plan that was provided, it is meeting the zoning parking district requirements, so that was mentioned. However, we, we are still working with the applicant to just try to make sure we can find it. No way to basically, to try to basically get all the concerns figured out. But yes, they are meeting the parking requirements. That was one of their main ones, their issue was they're afraid that tenants or customers were going to start using their, their parking. But we are working together as staff to make sure that doesn't happen.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor Protem, if I may, a couple of other items that came up from neighbors was physical protection for a wrought iron fence on an abutting property, which we can incorporate into our design. And there were some, some concerns expressed about stormwater capacity in the area. We're not aware that we have any capacity issues, but there are basements on that street. That was the primary reason for sharing those concerns. So we will make sure that the site plan meets those requests, the development standards of the code, and we will ensure that the stormwater capacity is.
Okay, and just a quick question, I don't know if this can be answered. So the applicant, is this the person also building this complex?
That's correct.
And is there a timeline for it? Was there, were we given a timeline for this development?
I'll defer to Addie, I don't know if we've received indication of when they would expect construction to start. As soon as the rezon is approved, we'll be in a position to take action on this.
Yeah, that's correct. We weren't given an actual deadline, it was just before, prior to the actual, until they get actual construction permits, we would have this figured out. So by the time its construction is ready to go, all these problems shouldn't come up again.
Okay, perfect, thank you, Mayor, that's all.
Yeah, thank you. The only additional, which you've already addressed is parking. I get concerned whenever we're in a residential area and we have businesses coming in. I've seen where the employees park and where, where the, the neighborhood parks. And so if we can guarantee or make every effort to make sure that parking for customers and/or employees are going to be able to park inside the perimeters, I think that would be advantageous for us because of the fact that people living in the residence want to be able to park their cars in front of their, their house if they don't have a driveway. And a lot of times, businesses come in and take up that, that space. So as much as possible, we would make sure that we point out that we want to ensure that the employees park and also the customers, whatever that, because I don't even know what kind of business we're talking about. But regardless, if we can do that, it would mitigate the problems in the neighborhood. At this time, Shannon, do we, do we waive the full reading and adopt a motion for this? Or do we wait for a second reading?
What you can do is you can just say, move the city attorney's motion, and that's all you need to do if you're inclined to adopt it, or reduce it, sorry.
Thank you very much. We want to make a motion to approve the city attorney's recommendation.
Second.
There's a motion first and second by myself and Mayor Protem Gallegos, under item C1. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you very much, thank you. Thank you for that presentation. We now move on to item D, petitions, bids, resolutions, ordinances, and agreements. Item D1 is a contract with HEDR Lighter, Delamas and Associates, HDL Companies, to provide consulting services for commercial cannabis business regulations management and enforcement. You also have this item, Adalini?
Adalina? Think well.
Yes, Mayor, thank you, I have this item. Mayor, Mayor Protem, councilmembers will take it, Community Development Director. The item for you this evening is a proposed contract for continued services with HDL relative to commercial cannabis business regulation. The council is fully aware, June 2021, you adopted the cannabis business ordinance with the purpose of setting forth the regulations for the conduct of those businesses and ensuring that the conduct of those businesses occur in a responsible manner in the interest of protecting health, safety, and welfare of the residents of the city, and to enforce the rules and regulations adopted within the local ordinance and state law. In order to best ensure compliance with those regulations, staff is proposing this contract with HDL, who has the expertise in these areas. HDL was previously contracted with the city to develop the regulatory program initially. They were also contracted to conduct a cost recovery fee study and analysis, as well as accompanying ballot measures for the cannabis tax ordinance. And they were also previously contracted to perform the full review and evaluation of the applications that the city received for commercial cannabis business permits. This history and experience, as well as the intimate knowledge with the city's regulations and its applicants, i.e. its permies or awardees, makes HDL uniquely qualified to continue their services to the city of Madera. The scope of services proposed under this contract would include pre-licensed site visits. This is intended to supplement the inspections that will occur relative to any building permits issued through our building department. They're primarily going to be looking at those additional measures required of commercial cannabis businesses. For example, their entrances, exits, exits, exits. Their limited access areas, their surveillance, alarm systems, security protocols, et cetera. The contract also proposes to provide supplemental background checks. Local ordinance does require that all employees, owners, principals, managers of cannabis business operations go through a background check. The services that HDL provides would not only provide that background check, but would also expound upon what would typically be provided through a standard DOJ check. Another amenity to this service from HDL is they provide an online portal for applicants to submit their applications. So this is very nice, it leaves the city out of the loop if cannabis businesses wish to hire new employees. This provides them an independent portal at which they can apply to HDL, pay their fees, submit any documentation necessary. And HDL will provide them with a unique City of Madera badge indicating that they have passed their check and been through that part of the process. Scope of services also include annual revenue audits. So our local ordinances do require annual reporting for purposes of ordinance and revenues. HDL would conduct a risk-based review of each business. They have a proprietary cannabis analytical testing system that they use to do that, that has been based upon their experience with performing similar audits for cannabis businesses. They will produce an audit report that is shared with the business operators, owners, allows them an opportunity to comment on the results of their audit, and then they would provide a final report to the city and be available for any assistance with appeals or enforcement of the audit files. So this relieves staff of any need to allocate resources to review the reporting and perform the audits required by code. The scope also includes post occupancy compliance inspection. So this is for purposes of annual reviews following opening in occupancies. The local ordinance does provide the city manager authority and powers to perform site visits, sample product, and basically ensure that operations are continuing in a manner compliant with both state and local laws. So this is important to ensure that not only when they open, they're in a position to operate in accordance, but they will continue to operate in accordance year over as they offer. And then finally, the scope of service does provide general technical assistance and subject matter expertise. So if we need consulting under any area of HDL's professional experience relative to cannabis, this gives us an opportunity to do it. And I do want to remind the council that while you have awarded permits to standard retail and microbusiness applicants, as well as social equity, there are the vertically integrated businesses for which there is no limitation on the number of awards. So it is conceivable that we will continue to receive applications for cannabis businesses in the city of Madera as HD, and those will still require scoring and ranking just as the initial applications did. So this would give us the means of vetting those applications back to HDL, who reviewed the original applications and would provide us a manner of ensuring that we're scoring applications consistently. So let's talk about the costs a little bit. These costs are intended to be borne by the applicant. So the contract we're looking at would basically be a pass-through, whereas in the case of the supplemental background checks, the applicant can pay directly to HDL. But in other visits, or in other instances, site visits will need to be scheduled, and payments would probably be made through a pass-through account with the city of Madera. For the pre-licensed site visits, HDL has quoted a price of $2,500 per site visit. That does assume a 10 days advance notice for scheduling and includes travel arrangements. Additional travel is charged at their hourly rate, that's the time that I believe that they're on the road. The supplemental background checks, there's different costs here depending upon the type of employee, whether it's an owner, principal, manager, or a general employee or line staff. And then there's the initial background fee, and then there's a reduced fee for annual renewals, as well as a fee if they lose their, their badge that shows that they went through those background checks. The annual revenue audits are priced at $10,000 per audit. And then the post occupancy compliance inspections, again, $2,500 per site visit. That does include all travel costs associated with the inspection, assuming that we're scheduling a minimum of four at one time. So if we don't have four businesses for them to visit in one visit, there will be additional costs associated relative to their travel and their hourly rates. And then the technical assistance and subject matter expertise is all based upon hourly rates of the respective HDL staff. Those run a range of $200 to $300 an hour. And the schedule of staff is included with your staff report, I did not list all of them. The term that's being proposed is three years. Don't want to enter into an agreement and then turn right back around and have to do it again. We do have some businesses that are moving forward very aggressively, and we don't blame them, and we're very excited about that. But with eight applicants approved for standard retail and social equity, as well as the potential for future vertically integrated businesses, we want to have HDL onboard for a term that will allow them to conduct those services accordingly as the businesses come in. Staff does have two corrections to point out to the agreement that was included in your packet. The first is page one of the agreement, Section 1 Services. There was a typo in your packet that indicated the city wished for the consultants to commence work on May 21, 2024. That should be March 21, 2024. We do have applicants in the process now with a desire to open May 1st. We need to get HDL onboard as soon as possible so we can accommodate your timeline. We need to get HDL onboard as soon as possible so we can accommodate your timeline schedules. And then the second correction is to page five of the agreement, section 10, relative to legal notices, that the individual who was originally identified for HDL in prior agreements has been replaced with Matthew Eaton. The agreement that was sent to HDL and signed in return has those corrections with them. So this is for the record, council's search. And with that, staff is recommending the council adopt the resolution with the changes to the agreement. And again, requesting that we do that this evening so we can get HDL services onboard to accommodate our business industry. And with that, I would like to make an announcement. Again, I know that we have anxious awardees out there who have been waiting on the preparation of a community benefits agreement. We do have the boilerplate of that drafted. We will now be in the process of plugging in all the representations that were made for the community benefits agreements for respective applicants. It will be our intention to bring that back to the council on April 2nd, I believe it is, first meeting in April. If for whatever reason, we're unable to take action that evening, we may request the council consider a special meeting later in the month, probably the last week, to accommodate that again, so we can keep up or try to keep up with the timelines. Hearing from who are wanting to open the first. With that, that includes my presentation, and I'm available to field any questions that council may have. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Will, for that report. Do we have any public comments from anyone in the public who'd like to address this issue? Seeing none, Alicia, do we have any written or Zoom comments? I don't see any hands up there.
We have no one on Zoom, Mayor, and let me just check my written comments. We have no written comments. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We will now close public comment on this item. We'll bring it back to council for comments and our questions.
I so moved to approve D1 with changes by Mr. Tackett.
Just a second. Give us the time. See if someone wants to ask a question or make a comment.
I didn't see any buttons, Mayor.
Yeah, well, then let me address that then. Thank you. I want to thank you for those comments, Will, regarding the CBA. I did get calls regarding that. There's, as you said it very well, there's some anxious folks out there. They're really wanting to get this done and make sure that we're moving forward with the permits that we have given out to our applicants. So I want to thank you for that, that you made that, that you addressed that. My one question is, we went through a lengthy debate regarding the vertical integration of services and permits for that. Did we ever get any bites on that for permits, Will, or are no?
We did not receive any independent applications for vertically integrated businesses and counterparts. The applications we received were all pertaining to the standard retail, micro business and social equity.
Yeah, that's interesting because we did go through a lengthy debate over months on that one item, and we have never gotten anyone. Okay, I believe council Mayor Protem Gallegos made a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Councilwoman Evans, all those in favor say aye.
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 Are there any opposed? None? Then the motion passes. Thank you very much, Will, for that. We will now move on to item D2, authorizing resolution for the acceptance of the greater fund grant for the Lyons Town and Country Park Trail System upgrades. This item will require a roll call vote, just to make sure everybody realizes that. Did Councilwoman Mejia ever come back?
She has not, Mayor.
Okay, so we will still require a roll call vote. Gabriela, do you have it this time? Okay.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Gabby Salazar, administrative analyst for the Parks and Community Services Department, presenting item D2, authorizing resolution for the acceptance of the general fund grant for the Lyons Town and Country Park Trail System upgrades. Okay, so summary of is the city has been awarded $1.1 million under the general fund specified grants fiscal year 2324, development and acquisition projects. This is a grant administered by the State of California Natural Resources Agency, and they are requesting authorizing resolution to affirm the city's commitment to effectively manage and utilize the awarded funds for the designated project. This funding will be primarily used to complete trail system upgrades at Lyons Town and Country Park with any additional park improvements as funding allows. Staff has secured consultant services from Odell Engineering, which is assisted, already assisting with the design and restoration plans for the trail system, as well as construction documentation packages and overall code compliance. For context, the trail system was constructed over 35 years ago. It is currently in disrepair due to lack of previous funding to actually improve and upgrade the trail conditions. The trail is presently made of decomposed granite, which we refer to as DG. This medium has become difficult and costly to maintain. And as well as with the weakened trail infrastructure, erosion from use, time and weather, this has given way to muddy and uneven walking surfaces with numerous potholes throughout the trail. On December 2023, 2023, council approved authorizing resolution number 23-211 regarding an additional pot of money, an additional award of half a million dollars from the California Department of Parks and Recreation, Office of Grants and Local Services to cover costs associated with the trail system upgrades as well. So the additional 1.1 million would bring the total funding for the trail system upgrades to $1.6 million. The submission of the authorizing resolution does not currently impose any additional financial implications on the city's budget. The city did budget $915,712 in fiscal year 2324 in anticipation of this award and to be able to commence the work on the project. Costs incurred after the performance period start as of September 1st or allow are allowable after September 1st, 2023, and any costs that we have incurred have been after this date. This fiscal year, the city has already encumbered a total of $172, oh gosh, $172,400 through task order number 1016-2023 with Odell Engineering. And the task order was executed under the authority of resolution number 22-178, which approved consultant service agreements with various professional engineering firms for on-call services, with Odell being one of those. So the recommendation tonight is to adopt a resolution accepting the amount of $1.1 million from the general fund grant administered by the California Natural Resources Agency for the Lyons Town and Country Park Trail System upgrades. And if you guys have any questions, here to answer them.
Thank you very much. Are there any members of the public wishing to address item D2 regarding the Town and Country Park Trail System? Seeing none, Alicia, do we have any written or Zoom comments regarding the park system?
We have none, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We'll close public comment on this item. I'll ask for discussion from my colleagues and/or a motion.
Is there to approve D2?
Second.
Motion to approve D2 by Councilwoman Evans, second by Councilmember Viegas. All those in favor? Oh, yes. Wait a minute. Hold on a second. Yeah, let me see. I'm getting ahead of myself. Yes, Alicia, would you call the roll, please?
Mayor Protem Gallegos?
Yes.
Councilmember Rodriguez is absent. Councilmember Montez is absent. Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Councilmember Mejia is absent. Councilmember Viegas?
Yes.
And Mayor Garcia?
Yes.
Motion passes with four yes votes and three councilmembers absent.
Thank you very much, Gabriela.
Thank you.
And you also have this other item, D3?
I have the next five.
Okay, I'm just checking because sometimes my notes say one thing and then. So item D3 is a contract change order for the Vernon McCullough Trail River Trail Restoration Project.
Correct. Again, Gabby Salazar, for the record. And to summarize this, so on November 15, 2023, council approved resolution number 23-197, awarding a contract under invitation for bid IFB number 202324-07 to Whitbro Inc., DBA Seal Right, paving and grading, Seal Right, for trail seal coating and repairs at the Vernon McCullough River Trail in the amount of $190,116. Seal Right did begin work on January 30th of this year, and they started clearing, grubbing, repairing identified potholes and filling identified cracks along the trail that had been identified in the bid. There were several takeoff sheets that outlined the various locations of the identified potholes and cracks. The takeoff sheets quantified the locations, the components and the measurements of the potholes and the cracks as identified in early 2022. And for background, the trail conditions and the need to restore the trail surfaced were surfaced when we were discussing the opportunity to apply for the Department of Transportation Caltrans Clean California Local Grant Program Funding Cycle 1. And during this grant application, and due to the grant's focus on revitalizing open spaces, trail restoration became a component of the grant application. The city was ultimately awarded the Clean California Local Grant Program Funding for an award in the amount of $832,350 in late 2022. IFB number 202324-07 was released on September 16, 2023. Bids were due on October 16, 2023. The award recommendation was presented to council on November 15, 2023, and Seal Right began work, again, like I, like I mentioned, on January 30th, 2024 thereafter. In mid-February, city staff conducted a comprehensive walkthrough of the trail to evaluate the progress being completed. And it was during this inspection that staff observed an increased number of cracks, some of which had widened, along with potholes that had expanded or contributed to the deterioration of the trail edges. And in these pictures, you can see there were, so the difference between the potholes is on the left image, and when we refer to cracks, that's on the right image. So for example, on the image with my colleague, he's pointing out in the left image, he's pointing out an additional pothole area, what we would consider the pothole area that was not identified in the takeoff sheets, but since had, you know, gotten relatively worse, that it's like, we need to address it now, as well as the cracks on the, on the, on the right hand side that had widened or at the time, you know, were not as, as, as noticeable. In addition, a particular segment of the trail behind the Rotary Park Pavilion leading to the State Route 99 underpass has been identified as requiring attention and enhancement. This section spans about 217 linear feet and currently maintains a width of eight feet. We are recommending to expand the width of this trail segment from eight feet to 10 feet and also to raise the trail's elevation in this particular section to mitigate flooding issues during or after significant rain events, as well as preventing instances where the trail becomes submerged by six inches or more, thereby minimizing washouts and erosion along the trail edges. And to give a point of reference of where this particular section is, this is right behind Rotary Park Pavilion, where we have our horseshoe pit area. This is the trail section that leads right under the bridge that goes under State Route 99. And I should mention, this is the narrowest section of the trail. The other trail is eight to 10 feet, so it's, it's relatively, I'm sorry. The other section of the trail spans up to 10 to 12 feet, and this is, this is the narrowest. Lastly, so extensive alligator and spider cracking has significantly impacted approximately 400 linear feet of the trail between Schnur Street and Granada Drive. And to address this issue effectively, it is recommended that the trail be grounded in place, followed by compaction and repaving. And to give a visual of what I'm talking about, this is a specific section of the trail. This is between Schnur and Granada, where, you know, simple patching of potholes or a simple patching of, of cracks would, would not do the job. And this has relatively gotten worse since the initial assessment of the trail. And the work needed to address this would be different than what the actual bid initially requested. It would require different equipment, different labor, you know, different, different type of work. In summary, the request herein with the change order aims to address three needs. Addressing the additional cracks and potholes that have either increased in size or severity or that have appeared altogether since the initial trail conditions were assessed. Second is to address additional work in the section of the trail behind Rotary Park, whitening the trail and addressing the increased washouts and erosion along the trail due to the low elevation in the section. And third is to address extensive and substantial alligator and spider cracking along a 400 linear feet of trail between Schnur Street and Granada Drive. The original contract for the project did not include a provision for contingencies. And typically, capital improvement projects do incorporate contingencies, you know, to expedite issues that may arise during the construction and, you know, to ensure a seamless project continuation without delays. Staff requests that the council approve and up to 10% contingency as well from the original contract amount, so that I've, this does happen in the, you know, as we're nearing the end of the project, that we don't have to halt the process and, and bring this back to council. The contingency allocation will provide flexibility to address, again, like I mentioned, any unforeseen circumstances or additional items that may arise beyond those described in this report. The cost of addressing the additional cracks and potholes is roughly over $4,000. Cost of addressing the section of trail by Rotary Park, $26,158. Cost of addressing the section between Schnur Street and Granada Drive, $32,016, which brings the total, total to $62,428 with 50 cents. And here's just a visual table of where those prices are coming from. There is specific pricing that we're basing off the, the additional cracks and potholes repair based off the bid pricing and some negotiation that took place to address the Rotary Park, as well as the Schnur to Granada section. The recommendation tonight is to adopt a resolution approving a contract change order for the Vernon McCullough River Trail Restoration Project in the amount of $62,428 with 50 cents and authorizing additional construction contingencies of up to 10% of the original construction agreement, amount of $190,116, up to an additional $19,011.60. And I'm here to answer any questions if council may have them.
Thank you. That's a lot of numbers. Quite a bit. Are there any members of the public wishing to address item D3 regarding the Vernon McCullough Trail? Alicia, do we have any written or Zoom comments?
We have none, Mayor, and for the record, Councilmember Mejia is on Zoom.
Okay, thank you much. So then we will now close public comment and bring it back to council for questions and or comments and a motion. Is there any comments? Council, Mayor Protem Gallegos?
Thank you, Mayor Garcia. Gabby, just a question. I know we've put a lot of things in the city that we've never had before, like our vehicle replacement, our fire engine replacement, our playground replacement funds have. I just, just putting it out that the staff can maybe look at a certain percentage every year putting into a fund to maintain the Vernon McCullough Trail because it's been there for a while, and we've really put no money into it. And you probably won't see it in my lifetime as, as a council that will have to redo it. But if we put just a little bit in the pot every year, by the time we will need to do this again, if we apply for a grant that has matching funds, we have funds in the pot to put towards that grant. If we get one, if not, we have money to help repair it. So if that's just something that you can have conversations with the staff about, I'd appreciate it.
Correct, and that is something that I, we started talking with engineering department to put it as part of a capital improvement project to, you know, do the seal coating, not to the extent that it's needed now, but as a maintenance seal coating, come about five years because that's when it would be.
Great. I don't think we realize how many people use it. I've had so many people contact me about the holes and the cracks and. I've had so many people contact me about the holes and the cracks, and we're working on it, we're working on it, we got a grant, it's, it's coming. But if we stay on it, it doesn't get as bad as it is now. So I appreciate that. That's all, Mayor.
Thank you. So you, you mentioned five years. Is that the anticipated lifespan of them?
No, we're just planning on doing a maintenance seal coating. That way, you know, we stay ahead of the game and we're not, not maintaining it, and then, you know, the issues get not addressed in a timely manner, just the maintenance part of it.
Okay, all right. Well, thank you. Seeing no further comments, I will entertain a motion.
Mayor, Councilmember Mejia has her hand raised.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm sure you're the happiest to see me back on. I just appreciate the staff's foresight and budgeting for not having to slow down to bring this back to council. So thank you for that, and thank you for the presentation, Gabby.
Thank you.
So do we have a motion?
Motion to approve D three?
Second. Motion to approve item D three by Councilwoman Evans, second by Councilmember Villegas. Being on Zoom, we do need to roll, correct? Alicia, would you please, please call the board?
Mayor Protem Gallegos?
Yes.
Councilmember Rodriguez is absent, Councilmember Montes is absent, Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Councilmember Mejia?
Yes.
Councilmember Villegas?
Yes.
Mayor Garcia?
Yes.
Motion passes with five yes votes and two councilmembers absent.
All righty.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor, I need to take this.
Yes, you can step up for a second. Okay. Okay, we will move on to item D four, Sunrise Rotary Sports Complex Rental for Second Annual Kickball Tournament Event Fee Waiver Request.
Mr. Mayor, before we go any further, we no longer have a quorum, so we'll have to take up maybe a brief break or just...
So even though we don't, we have...
There has to be physically present.
Physically present.
There has to be a quorum physically present.
Okay, well, we'll take a, a two-minute, three-minute break.
All righty, thank you.
I have no idea how long a whole day. Boy, this is an adventurous night. Well, yeah, it's all kinds of stuff going on tonight. Is it a full moon? We're back for, resume our meeting. Thank you.
Item D four, Sunrise Rotary Sports Complex Rental for Second Annual Kickball Tournament Event for Event Fee Waiver Request. Again, my name is Gabby Salazar, Admin Analyst for the Parks and Community Services Department. The city received an inquiry requesting the waiving of rental fees for using Madera Sunrise Rotary Sports Complex for an event on Saturday, April thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. The request comes from Madera County Child Support, and they are hosting their Second Annual Kickball Tournament. The rental request includes specific use of the north and south softball fields at the park. The event is scheduled between eight AM to three PM, and the event aims to bring together employees from all county departments for a day of friendly competition while supporting a worthy cause. They are planning to help, or they are raising funds for charity with proceeds from participating registration fees, sponsorships, and any additional donations. The winner or winners will designate the charity of their choice to receive the funds. Madera County Child Support is committing to adhering to all rules and regulations regarding the use of the park and will ensure the area is left in its original condition following the conclusion of the event. The event itself has been approved to take place, but is still subject to all other applicable requirements, one of those including the provision of acceptable rental insurance. Applicable costs associated with the rental of the park include an administrative fee of twenty-five dollars, rental charges adding up to one hundred and seventy-five, and that's twelve dollar fifty cent per hour, hourly rental fee at seven hours times two fields. The deposit is fifty dollars for each field, and so that's a total of a hundred dollar deposit, and this adds up to a total of three hundred dollars. Visual table of where the costs are coming from. So tonight, the recommendation is to adopt a resolution waiving the rental fees of Sunrise Rotary Sports Complex related to the Second Annual Kickball Tournament by the Madera County Child Support on April thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-four at an anticipated fee rental of three hundred dollars. That concludes my presentation.
Are there any members of the public wishing to comment on item D four, the Fee Waiver Request? Alicia, do we have any Zoom or written comments regarding this item?
We have none, Mayor.
Thank you. We'll bring it back. We'll close public comment on this item. We'll bring it back to council for comments and questions and a motion. Myself, I just want to see the board of supervisors running around kicking the balls if they're going to be out there. Did we receive an invitation to join?
We have not, not that I'm aware of.
Okay, now, did I? No, this is absolutely a fun event, I can imagine, and it's a worthy cause. If there's no objections, okay, there we go. Yes. I got you, I got you. All right.
I just wanted to see him running around.
Yeah, absolutely. I want to see you running around out there. Motion to approve item D four by Councilwoman Evans, second by Councilmember Villegas. Uh, roll call, please, Alicia.
Mayor Protem Gallegos?
Yes.
Councilmember Rodriguez absent, Councilmember Montes absent, Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Councilmember Mejia?
Yes.
Councilmember Villegas?
Yes.
Mayor Garcia?
Yes.
Motion passes with five yes votes and two members of the council absent.
We approve this motion. Thank you very much. Pending an invitation from the county. We move on to item D five. This item is Pan American Park Rental for Cesar Chavez Day Event Fee Waiver Request. Gabriela?
Correct, I will jump right in. That's okay. So the city received another inquiry requesting the waiving of rental fees for, this time, using Pan American Park for an event on Sunday, April the seventh. This request comes from Madera Coalition for Community Justice, and they are planning to host Cesar Chavez Day. The rental request includes specific use of the picnic shelter area at the park. The event is scheduled between ten AM to four PM. The event aims to be a commemorative event in honor of civil rights leader Cesar Chavez. The event is designated to be inclusive and open to the public, featuring a diverse array of activities and offerings. These include free commodity boxes, children's activities, cultural performances, guest speakers, contests with prizes, and a historical exhibition, we are told. Considering the community-focused nature of the event and its alignment with the city's values of inclusivity and cultural celebration, the request for waiving rental fees warrants thoughtful consideration. This event is subject to all other applicable requirements, and again, this includes the provision of acceptable rental insurance and any other permits for open-to-the-public events. Applicable costs associated with the rental of Pan Am for this event include an administrative fee of twenty-five dollars, rental charges of seven dollars per hourly rental at six hours, forty-five dollars, deposit of fifty dollars for a total of one hundred and twenty dollars. Okay, and visual of where the fees are coming from. And the recommendation tonight is to adopt the resolution waiving the rental fees of Pan Am Pan American Park related to the Cesar Chavez Day hosted by the Madera Coalition for Community Justice on April seventh, two thousand and twenty-four at an anticipated fee rental of one hundred and twenty dollars. And that concludes my presentation.
Thank you very much. We will open public comment. Are there any members of the public wishing to comment on this item? D five. Seeing none, Alicia, do we have any written or Zoom comments on this?
We just received a written public comment, Mayor, and this is from Hugo Morrison. Good evening, everyone. My name is Hugo Morrison with the Madera Coalition for Community Justice, and I'll be referring to item D five, the Pan American Park Rental for Cesar Chavez Day Event Fee Waiver Request. We intend to have a celebration of life and victories of Cesar Chavez as well as a resource fair for the community and public condolences for the recently passed farmworkers. We believe this event will be of great value to the community, both in spirit and through the many resources that residents will be connected to via a variety of nonprofit organizations. We will have cultural performances, free resources for the community, guest speakers promote youth literacy, as well as STEM activities for the youth. We request a fee waiver to allow us to allocate our resources to the full benefit of the community. We also invite the council and all present to attend. We thank you very kindly for your consideration. And that would complete the written public comment we received, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. We'll close public comment and bring it back to my colleagues for discussion, questions, and a motion. I just want to say that the Coalition for Community Justice did reach out to, to me. There, if we haven't received the invitation already, one is coming for the council to attend this important event. Any further comments from my colleagues? Then I will accept the motion.
Motion to approve D six?
I second.
Motion to approve item D five by Councilwoman Evans, second by Councilwoman Mejia. Roll call, please, Alicia.
Mayor Protem Gallegos?
Yes.
Councilmember Rodriguez is absent, Councilmember Montes is absent, Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Councilmember Mejia?
Yes.
Councilmember Villegas?
Yes.
Mayor Garcia?
Yes.
Motion passes with five yes votes and two members of the council absent.
Thank you very much, Alicia. We will now move on to item D six, Contract Change Order for the McNally Park Basketball Courts Reconstruction Project.
This is my second-to-last presentation tonight. Again, this is item D six, Contract Change Order for the McNally Park Basketball Courts Reconstruction Project. On February seventh, two thousand and twenty-four, council approved Resolution Number twenty-four twenty-five, awarding a contract under invitation for bids IFB number twenty twenty-three twenty-four to Juarez Brothers General Engineering Inc., Juarez Brothers, for the two basketball courts reconstruction project at McNally Park for two hundred and eighteen thousand, three hundred and fifty-three dollars. The reconstruction of the basketball courts at McNally Park is being funded by Community Development Block Rent, CDBG Funds. The city was awarded six hundred and nine thousand, three hundred and seven dollars during fiscal year twenty-two twenty-three to provide improvements at the park. Phase one of the project dealt with the playground area improvements and park amenities revamp. Phase two includes plans to, or includes plans to reconstruct the two existing basketball courts at the park. Following the execution of the notice to proceed for the McNally Park Basketball, Basketball Courts Reconstruction Project, Juarez Brothers commenced mobilization, site preparation, and the demolition of the existing basketball courts at the park. However, during the demolition, demolition phase, an unexpected discovery was made regarding the thickness of the existing courts, as well as a second contingency matter arose concerning the subgrade conditions at the basketball courts. Unusual thickness of the courts, it was found that the basketball courts had an, had an unusual thickness ranging from approximately seven to eight inches, significantly exceeding the standard thickness of two to three inches typically observed in standard basketball courts. This unexpected deviation necessitated additional transportation resources for the removal of the materials from the site, leading to increased labor and time requirements to address the unforeseen circumstances. And just, I don't know if, this is a little video. I don't know if I can.
I like it. I like working in town with all those cars.
So just to put it in context, it's a lot.
It built it to last.
Oops. As well as subgrade conditions, there were, the contractor found there were elevated moisture levels in the subgrade causing instability and posing challenges to the construction, or foreseeing posing challenges to the construction process. In response, Juarez Brothers engaged Technicon Engineering Services, Inc. to assess the conditions and provide a professional opinion. Technicon conducted a site inspection on March first, two thousand and twenty-four, and their findings are documented in the staff report as attachment four. The report from Technicon Engineering Services provides valuable insights into the subgrade conditions as well as informing necessary remedial actions to ensure the structural integrity and stability of the basketball courts during the reconstruction process. And these are some of the pictures of the current, current conditions. Like we mentioned, there was moisture, the subgrade is pretty unstable and needs to be addressed. On March sixth, two thousand and twenty-four, a joint onsite meeting involving representatives from Juarez Brothers, city staff, and Odell Engineering convened at McNally Park to discuss the change order request and confirm subgrade conditions. During the meeting, the use of a T-handle probe by Juarez Brothers confirmed the presence of unstable subgrade in various sections of the courts. It's important to highlight that the construction agreement with Juarez Brothers did not include provisions for contingencies. So as a result, we are, the project has been temporarily halted, pending presentation to council tonight and for deliberation and decision-making regarding the necessary course of action to address the identified subgrade issues. Cost of removal of excessive thickness of base is six thousand, eight hundred and ninety-three dollars with fifty-one cents. The cost of addressing the unstable subgrade conditions is twenty-nine thousand, fifty dollars and thirty-eight cents for a total change order to thirty-five thousand, nine hundred and forty-three dollars with eighty-nine cents. Did I write on me? Again, vis, visual representation of where the numbers are coming from. And the recommendation tonight is to adopt a resolution approving a contract change order for the McNally Park Basketball Courts Reconstruction Project in the amount of thirty-five thousand, nine hundred and forty-three dollars with eighty-nine cents and authorizing an additional construction contingencies of up to five percent of the original construction agreement amount up to an additional ten thousand, nine hundred and seventeen dollars with sixty-five cents. That concludes my presentation. I'm open to questions.
Thank you very much. Gabriela, are there any members of the public wishing to address item D six regarding the McNally Park Basketball Courts? Seeing none, Alicia, do we have any written or Zoom comments?
We have none, Mayor.
Okay, we will close public comment, and we'll be bringing it back to my colleagues for questions and/or requests for information. Myself, I don't see any hands raised or butts pushed. Councilmember Mejia?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Gabby, for the presentation. We literally unearthed a bigger bill. I'm wondering how much longer that would mean for the completion of the project.
So as far as the project being halted right now, I have, I, I have been speaking with the contractor regularly, and as of this morning, they are set to start tomorrow, and the equipment for the actual basketball courts, like the, the backboards, the, like, it's already ordered, and this would just address the needed work. They can start pouring the concrete within the next days and get the project completed on time.
Okay, so the original, they would still finish by the original deadline?
Correct.
And that was?
Weather permitting and, you know, everything else, everything else on track, yes.
Okay, thank you, Gabby.
Mayor Protem Gallegos.
Thank you, Mayor Garcia. Gabby, just a question real fast. We're tearing out seven to eight inches of concrete.
That were existing.
Existing, and we're going to two to three inches. Is that now just, it's gonna last forever for two to three inches?
That is a recommendation from our engineering consultant. That is the typical thickness of courts. Why they were that thick, and also to the, the the thing that the contractor found is that they weren't thick, they weren't seven to eight inches all around. They, it was patchy thickness here and there. So it wasn't.
Uniform.
Uniform, yes.
Because probably back in the day, the concrete was different material than it is now, and that's why I'm thinking the two to three inches. And that's a standard across the board at any basketball court that's built in a, in a city or in a school district.
That's what we were told from our consultant, that typically it's two to three, and what the contractor was stating, you know, was we've been working with our consultant hand by hand. Any, anything, any submittals, any, this change order was also reviewed by our consultant.
Perfect. Thank you, Gabby.
Another?
Can thank you, Mayor. And one other item worth highlighting is the material itself is gonna be a different material. The existing material was, was asphalt concrete, blacktop. The new material is, is asphalt concrete. I'm sorry, not asphalt concrete. It's, it's concrete. And so the material itself is gonna be a different concrete. It's gonna be a much stronger material.
Yeah, thank you for that. I imagine that improvements will be made and technology is advanced to, to make things better.
One more question, Mayor. So is there a warranty on this, on the concrete with, for no cracks in it once we lay it? I ask that because when we did the fire station, we had some cracks, and I was like, okay, wait a minute here.
Yeah, I can follow up. I don't know off the top of my head. Unfortunately, I can follow up.
Yeah, concrete is extremely difficult to get. There's a lot of conditions that come into it. One of the big things for the city is to make sure that we have a, a, a better court than what we had before. And that was probably the biggest advocate for the concrete versus the blacktop, just having been a basketball player very early on in my life. Can also much anymore, but, but i- it's gonna make for a much better court. I think this item is very consistent with the previous several items. The city simply hasn't done the greatest job of maintaining our, our facilities. And one of the things that we're trying to address a lot of it now, but we're playing catch up, and instead of replacing or repairing things every, you know, several decades, we're simply gonna have to be more consistent consistently in making sure that whenever things break or, or aren't functioning well, we're addressing them, attempting to address them immediately versus in doing wholesale changes where then it gets extremely expensive like this court. That's, that's our commitment. The challenge is gonna be finding the, the resources to do it.
Right.
But it won't be for lack of effort.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Yeah. So I want to see you, if you could, please, on the basketball court, show some of them skills, you know? Seeing no more comments, I'll entertain a motion.
I still move to approve this item as presented.
Motion to approve by Councilwoman Mejia, second by Councilmember Villegas. Roll call, please, Alicia.
Mayor Protem Gallegos.
Yes.
Councilmember Rodriguez absent. Councilmember Montes is absent. Councilmember Evans.
Yes.
Councilmember Mejia.
Yes.
Councilmember Villegas.
Yes.
Mayor Garcia.
Yes.
Motion passes with five yes votes and two members of the council absent.
All right. Thank you. We will now move on to item D seven. Excuse me. Contract Change Order for the Centennial Park Pool Complex Upgrades and Repairs Project.
This is my last item tonight. So item D seven, I'll jump right in as well. So on January seventeenth, twenty twenty four, council approved Resolution Number twenty four thirteen, awarding a contract under an invitation for bids number twenty twenty three twenty four dash zero eight to New Image Pool Interiors, Inc., otherwise we're gonna refer to them as New Image, for the improvements and repairs project at Centennial Park Pool Complex for two hundred and ten thousand dollars. The repairs and improvements at Centennial Park Pool Complex are being funded by Community Development Block Grant, CDBG funds. The city was awarded two hundred and fifteen thousand dollars during fiscal year twenty three twenty four to provide improvements at the pools. Worth noting is the city released IFB number twenty twenty three twenty four dash zero eight on December sixth, twenty twenty three, and regrettably did not receive any bids. On January seventeenth, twenty twenty four, staff brought the request before council to authorize the possibility of direct negotiations with a contractor with the construction agreement not to exceed two hundred and ten thousand dollars. New Image was a local contractor that had shown interest during the bid process, but decided not to submit a bid due to some of the bid requirements, one of them being specifically being the CDBG Section Three Program Bid Requirements. And just a little sidetracked, this is the requirement that would require them to have specific labor, low-income workers, which they were not able to, to fill. Staff at New Image were able to negotiate the construction agreement at two hundred and ten thousand dollars. And worth noting is that the engineers estimate projected the cost of the project at two hundred and seventeen thousand dollars. IFB included, the IFB included the following scope of work, replastering of the lap pool and the dive pool. These are two large, so there's three pools at the, at the complex, lap pool, dive pool, and what we refer to as the kiddie pool. Replacement, it also included replacement of the lap pool and dive pool waterline tile. This is just a tile that goes around the, the waterline of the pools. Replacement of lap pool and dive pool safety tiles such as the depth, the no running or no diving signage. It included replacement of the ADA ramp floor tile with new tile, and it included the replacement of seven skimmers on the lap pool and the replacement of eight floor fittings on the dive pool. The IFB did not request a replacement of the railing at the lap pool at the lap pool ADA ramp or the grab bars that we are trying to address now. The work was originally not included in the initial IFB due to budget constraints and the primary scope of work, including the re-tiling, replastering, skimmers, and floor fitting replacements as the most crucial work needing to be addressed as funding was available. So these are some of the images showing what I'm referring to. In these images, this is the ADA ramp rail that we want to address now. And the next image is an image of what I, what I, what I refer to as the grab rails. There's five rails around the pools that we want to address. So addressing the replacement of the, of the pool ramp and the grab bars would be optimal now, though, since the pool has been drained and the ramp has been stripped of its floor tile, leaving the area accessible to remove the existing railing and, and the install of new railing. It should be noted that the existing rail itself is solid and poses no immediate concerns at the moment, yet the rail is deteriorating visually with several welded patches to ensure the stability of the rail, addressing cracking as, as it comes up. There's also calcium, calcium buildup, which continues to lead to the corrosion of the steel, and the five grab rails along with, along the lap and dive pool face similar corrosion conditions that would benefit from replacement now as well. Implementing these replacements now would address future concerns of the ramp rail and grab rails would contribute to the overall safety, accessibility, and longevity of the infrastructure of the aquatics facility, ensuring an improved experience for users of the pool. And also too, we do have the aquatic season that typically starts late May and runs through August. Financial impact, there, the two custom ADA rails with the ten anchors and, I'm gonna murder this word, scutions, twenty thousand dollars, is a cost of twenty thousand dollars. Five sets of figure four grab rails with anchors and scutions along with the, along the lap and dive pool is a total of nine thousand dollars for a total of twenty nine thousand dollars. So here we have a CDBG expenditure encumbered to date. We did have an expense for the IFB advertisement, the cost of the contract with New Image Pool Interiors. We do have total expenditures encumbered to date, two hundred and thirteen thousand, three hundred and four dollars. CDBG award was a total of two hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. We do have that balance to go towards the change order. The total change order amount of twenty, twenty nine thousand dollars would be give me one second. Total change order amount of twenty nine, twenty nine thousand dollars. We have a CDBG award balance of two thousand, six hundred ninety five dollars with ten cents, and the change order amount not able to be covered by CDBG amount would be twenty six thousand dollars, three hundred twenty six thousand, three hundred and four dollars with ninety cents. Staff is recommending using part-time salary savings from the aquatics budget to cover the additional cost. Tonight's recommendation is to adopt a resolution approving a contract change order for the Centennial Park Pool Complex Upgrades and Repairs Project in the amount of twenty nine thousand dollars. That concludes my presentation. Available for questions.
Thank you. Thank you very much. You got through it. Are there any members of the public wishing to address item D seven, the Centennial Park Pool? Do, Alicia, do we have any public comment on Zoom or on written comments?
We have none, Mayor. Thank you.
Okay, I'll bring a closed public comment and bring it back to council for comments and questions and/or motion.
Motion to approve D seven.
See, no. We do have a question, so let's slow down a little bit on comp and making motions. Councilwoman Mejia.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Gabby, for the presentation. I am wondering, is that the only pot of money that is available for that? The part-time salary budgets you mentioned?
Yeah, so we are trying to stick with the relevant budget for, you know, to use a relevant budget, and seeing as we do have some salary savings in the aquatics budget big enough to cover this cost, that's where we're recommending to use that, that specific line item within the aquatics budget. Thank you.
Seeing no further comments and or hands raised, I will entertain a motion.
I need, uh, I think a motion. And Benega, second.
Second. Motion by Councilwoman Evans, second by Councilmember Villegas. Alicia, would you call the roll?
Mayor Protem Gallegos.
Yes.
Councilmember Rodriguez is absent. Councilmember Montes is absent. Councilmember Evans.
Yes.
Councilmember Mejia.
Yes.
Councilmember Villegas.
Yes.
Mayor Garcia.
Yes.
Motion passes with five yes votes and two members of the council absent.
Okay, thank you very much for that, Gabriela. Very well done. We have no items under item E. There are no administrative reports. We will come back to council members for council member reports, announcements, future agenda items. Item F is, this portion of the meeting is reserved for the mayor and council members to make brief reports on boards, committees, and other public agencies and at public events to request updates, to initiate future agenda items, and to take action on matters initiated under this section of the agenda. Under this section, the council may take action only on items specifically agendized and which meet other requirements for action. Mayor Protem Gallegos.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanna give a shout out to the Clean and Safety Team and Parks for doing such an awesome job on the skate park. It was a great event. Lot of people out there that day. Also would like to thank our Water Department and Public Works and probably our streets that had to all kind of jump in. We had six water leaks, I think, within a couple of hours, so everybody did their part to make sure that, that we didn't have any interrupted service to our residents. And that includes, you know, payroll, making sure that people are able to pay their bills, and to the point where we have officers going to calls, to planning, getting through all the projects that people are, are having, new business coming to the city. So from the left to the right, to the ups and the downs, I think all our staff are working so hard for us. That's all, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilwoman Evans?
Yes, first and foremost, I want to offer condolences for Jim Talbot. And next, tomorrow evening at Madera Community College, I will be on the panel for the the annual Women of History Celebration. So everyone is invited to come out. It's going to be from five to seven. And not only will it be me, there are four other young ladies, and our supervisor Gonzalez is one of those as well that will be sitting on the panel. And other than that, God bless each and every one of you. Go home safely, and that's it, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilwoman Mejia.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to offer my condolences as well to Jim Talbot's family and friends. I know it's a very big loss for our community. I would like to thank the International Women's Day Committee that hosted this year's event where we were invited to speak. There were about three hundred people there. It was awesome to see everyone come out and be there as a community. We're also on the third phase, I believe, of the annual curbside cleanup, so just a reminder that the maps are online. And what a great job has been done with this cleanup, so if, though, though that information is available online for all of our residents to refer to. And that's my report.
Thank you much. Councilmember Villegas.
Thank you, Mayor Santos Garcia. I just wanted to say thank you to this lady, Gabby, for all those presentations. Thank you for your patience. And I just wanted to say that we are thank you for all these ladies of the year that were present. And just, that's about it. Thank you.
Thank you. As far as I'm concerned, well, my report includes, I had the pleasure of joining Sierra Vista Elementary School and the staff, the teachers out there, they invited me to read a couple of books to the, the elementary students. I had a great time reading two books. Reading, Reading Across America is a national project that encourages community members to come out and read to children and address the importance of them reading and, and getting, reading at home and doing as much reading as possible. So it was a really a great event for myself personally to go out there. Gabriela, I want to congratulate you on the presentation of the Arts Council event regarding the, the, the works of art that were we were granted monies from Clean America, Clean California, and Caltrans to do this. And you provided an excellent emcee job, as you did, and you, you made everyone feel welcome, and and the artists were generally pleased with the event. And so thank you for being out there for us. And I attended two Little League opening days. One is at Town and Country Park. One was for the American League, and the other ones was for the National League. All our little T-ballers and softball players and, and Little League baseball kids are out there with their parents, and it was a beautiful day. Both of the days, there, there were two Saturdays in a row. They were beautiful days. The sun was shining, the birds were singing, and, and the umpires yelled, play ball. And it was an excellent day on both days. So that concludes what I wanted to share with y'all. And, and of course, we will now go into closed session. Shannon, if you will take us under item G to closed session, I would appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have one item for closed sessions. Conference Legal Counsel pending litigation presented to government, section five four nine five six point nine, case the city of Madera versus Jesus Lopez. Case number NCV zero eight sixty one eighty eight, and we do not anticipate there will be any close announcements from that. And Councilmember Mejia, a link will be sent to you so you can participate in closed session as well. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, y'all, for being here tonight. Thank you very much, and safe travels coming back home. Thank you very much for joining us. Very much, Alicia. Shannon, would you bring us back from closed session, please?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There was no reportable action taken in closed session.
Thank you very much. Excuse me a second. I just need to get the the last dates, our next meeting dates. Do you have those in front of you, Alicia?
The next meeting dates, Mayor, are Wednesday, April 3rd and Wednesday, April 17th.
Thank you very much for that. This meeting is now adjourned. It is now 8:43. Thank you very much, and have a good night.
Good night.